Good evening and welcome to North Penn's work session. October 8th, 2013. Tonight is our regularly scheduled work session. The meeting is being videotaped for community cable channels. Individuals attending this meeting and intending to speak to the board should be aware they're being videotaped. In order to meet the requirements of the Pennsylvania Sunshine Law, it is necessary to record the names of all citizens who speak to the board during the meeting. To assure compliance with this requirement, it is essential that those planning to address the board come to the microphone, state their name and address, and sign the audience's logbook. Members of the audience are asked to limit their questions and comments. To allow time for all those who wish to speak to the board, the board president may ask the individual to yield the microphone to the next speaker, and this is in reference to Board Policy 8340. Again, welcome. I'd like to start this meeting off with a pledge of allegiance led by Mrs. Murphy.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's start off with our first agenda item, which is from Finance. This is the tax collector, late filing fees, and the resolution is attached to item 5813. Who's going to handle this?
We certainly can take input from members of Finance and from Mr. Schock, our business administrator. The gist of this is that the resolution would indicate that if there are any issues with late filing, and if it's deemed necessary and appropriate, then there could be a penalty assigned for being late. But the superintendent would retain the authority to waive that late filing fee, and we have tremendous cooperation from our tax collectors, appreciate their work very much, so this should never be taken personally by anyone. But this is something that is done by school districts and puts into place so that if you ever would have a problem in the future, we'd have a mechanism in place to be able to, you know, take care of that issue.
So this isn't in response to a problem we've been having?
Our tax collectors, by and large, are, some of them never late, I mean, many of them, and they do a tremendous job. We have great tax collectors, I appreciate their work very much, and I wouldn't want anybody to take it personally. But we have this resolution here that would give the ability to have some late fees assigned if somebody's having some difficulty meeting the deadlines.
What are we talking about? Is this literally transferring money into our account, or is this just a piece of paper that says I've collected?
No, we do. Yeah, go ahead, Bob.
This is just the report of the collections. The money's transferred before that. So, but if we get late reports, then it's, it causes other difficulties in the business office, keeping up with our reporting deadlines and reports that the board wants to see.
Bob, just to recap the process, we do a sweep daily?
Correct.
So that's not the issue. It is just them reporting what the money, or who paid those funds that we have taken. So that's not the issue. But this is in response to an existing problem.
In one case.
In one case.
Yeah, there's one case.
Well, the other thing is, I requested that there be like a rollout period where the collectors get notification of this, this policy, and maybe an amnesty for the first time, or something like that, so they're, they become aware that this policy is in existence, instead of just springing it on them and then send them a bill, sending them a bill. So that was one of the--
And make it effective six months from now, or whatever, and say, you're now on notice.
Right.
Well, the bulk of the business--
Ninety days, whatever.
Well, Mr. Solomon identified that the bulk of the business comes in, in the August, September, and October timeframes, and that if they need to put in place some new procedures or policies, we're willing to step up and help them even do that. But there has to be some penalty for not being able to meet those requirements, and that's what this is, that's what's going on. We did ask, though, didn't we at the Finance Committee, that we asked to have tax collectors be notified so they have an opportunity to give us input?
Correct, and they were notified a couple of months ago initially, and then again this week.
Okay. So if they were just told this week, they're not going to be here to talk about it. This is only the first reading of the policy anyway, right?
Yeah, it's a resolution.
Well, can we hold it off then, please? Do we have an opportunity to see if they want to come?
Yeah, we should. We should make sure they're notified.
Yeah, they were notified, but, you know, they've provided some feedback to the business office, but, you know, this is common in other taxing entities, so they're aware of it.
So we're enacting the authority to impose a fine, but basically you have the say on whether you're going to impose the fine or not.
It's a late filing, it's a late filing fee for those who don't file timely, in a timely manner, and the fee's $20 a day for up to, what, $250?
Correct.
At the limit. And the other, the other issue that was raised, I guess, I guess, driving this really more than anything, we're not going to, we don't count Saturdays and Sundays, we don't count holidays, and there is leeway, the additional language is put in here, should there be some extenuating circumstance behind that, then we're willing to be that flexible. But there has to be, obviously, some further discussion. I really would rather see some input from these people. If they don't show up next month, then fine. But like, you know, if we're going to delay it, or we're going to, I really think we should offer them an opportunity to come to the meeting. Tell them, tell them this week, this is Tuesday, guys. That means they got told yesterday?
Yeah, I don't think that's correct.
Even Friday?
But it doesn't apply until March.
Well, I'm not arguing that with you.
I just want to make sure somebody's come in here one day and say, wait.
I don't complain about it. I mean, this is a rule. We say, look, you get it in time, don't worry about it. If you're late, you may as well.
As long as you're notified.
If you're sick, we're going to cut you a break. I mean, I don't see a problem with it.
When you talk.
You know? I mean, why are they going to come in? And they're going to go in and say, we don't like it? Make it 10 bucks?
I just want to make sure that all the tax collectors are notified.
Of course, I don't like it. I don't care.
I just don't know. I mean, it's nice, according to Mr. Schock, they were notified. If we're enacting a resolution, of course, they're going to say, no, don't fine us, so, you know. I think they know about it, right?
But we're not doing, this is a work session. We're not doing anything.
I haven't heard that they're not.
Let's talk.
We also gave them a raise.
Yeah, we did.
Well, we voted to give them a raise.
It doesn't give you two years.
Still.
Yeah.
Doesn't matter.
So do we want more input or not?
Yes, I think we should.
More input?
I don't have--
Move it forward. I have enough time.
My, my main concern was just to make sure that they were aware that this was going into place, and that, you know, that was pretty much it. To me, it isn't an, it isn't a discussion about whether it's going to go in or not.
Oh, I don't think so either. I think that's not the issue.
It's just, I don't, I don't want people to just be surprised, that's all.
They were notified this week. I think we should look, give them an opportunity to come next week, next meeting, and see if they speak. If you want to do it that way, I'm fine with that, but that's, I just want to make sure that we reach out and tell each one, each and every one of them that they have an opportunity to come and talk about this.
Okay. We're not voting until the next action meeting anyhow.
Next week, next Thursday.
So, fine. Put it on the agenda and let them know it's going to be heard, and then figure out, Bob, when would you want to do it? I mean, Joe's point, I think, is, is pretty much rectified if, if we say it's effective in April.
Yeah, it should do that, yeah.
Two, three months' notice, this is what it's going to do, right? I mean-- It should have effective date on it, makes sense. And then it-- Well, what's your suggestion, Bob?
Yeah, well, I think it probably should go into effective calendar year.
January 1st?
Anyone?
All right.
That's fine. It's two months' notice, that sounds fine.
Yeah, you're right. And then if they miss a deadline between now and then, send out a note, you know, if this was after January 1st, you would be fined $200.
It's a reminder. I mean, I think, I assume they're fairly detail-driven people. I know they are, so, at least those that I do know are.
Six out of seven are.
I disagree with a few of the words.
Those that I do--
In the old days, yeah, I remember service--
Six out of seven were fine. All right, listen, in all fairness, though, not to bash tax collectors, but we, they've done a great job for us, they represent us well, and we just need to fine-tune the process. So if you're okay with January 1st, Joe, if you think it addresses the issues, and that gives them one more 10 days of opportunity to get back here and talk about it at the next meeting.
Are you going to send them a registered letter, or what are you going to do?
We sent them an email for, and they were aware of this two months ago as well, so, you know.
Well, we assume--
Well, let's, they will be now, for sure. I'll make sure I call each and every one of them myself.
All right, sounds good.
This way they get an opportunity to speak, and if they have a concern, they can voice it, and I'll bring it up to the next meeting. All right, education, community, and policy, we're going to talk about the school performance profile. Who's handling that?
Yes, we will. I will, with some assistance from Dr. Holman, and we do have a PowerPoint for this, so if you want to turn to be able to see that. The school performance profile was developed by the Department of Education, and it's now online, and it's there for individuals to view each school's performance profile. There's one for every school, public school, in the Commonwealth. It is not done to give a composite district score, but there's one there for every school. And just as a bit of a background in that, you may recall at a previous meeting, we had explained that the EESA, or the No Child Left Behind, has became known, federal legislation was not renewed, and instead then states were given an opportunity to provide for a waiver. Pennsylvania's waiver was approved, and this was a part of that waiver, to be relieved of the requirements of No Child Left Behind and put this in place, instead of No Child Left Behind, AYP. It is school-level reporting. As I said earlier, there are all the elementary, secondary schools, the charter schools, cyber charters, and the comprehensive career and technology centers, those that award diplomas. The way the formula works is there is 40% that's due to indicators of academic achievement, and that would be the percent proficient or advanced on the PSSAs, and on the keystones for the applicable courses and grades, the percent competent or advanced on industry standards for your students that do have trade training, that sort of thing, the percent proficient or advanced on the PSSA grade three reading. There is research that supports the fact of the importance of grade three reading and need to have students being able to be on grade level at grade three, so that has its own separate category there, and the SAT or ACT college-ready benchmarks, given the importance of SATs and ACTs. Then there's another 40%, and this is the part that's really pretty new to the public. We've been looking at academic growth for a couple of years now, but now as a part of the reporting, academic growth is reported at 40% of the SPP formula. That is made of either meeting or exceeding your annual academic growth expectations, and they're in those areas, the math, or if a student has Algebra I, the reading, or the literature, depending on their age, the science, or biology, if they're at the high school level, and writing. And it's a lot of complicated calculations that go into calculating that academic growth. Nevertheless, the state has determined they believe they have a way that is defensible to determine whether or not a student made one year's worth of growth, more or less, and they give you a way of reporting that. Then you have 10% on what they call other academic indicators, and that would include the graduation rate for a high school, the attendance rate, it would include your advanced placement, or if you have an IB program, International Baccalaureate Program, or you have students that actually earn college credit, your PCT and participation in that program, and then next year it will also include your promotion rate. So that is 10% of your formula. Now, we don't have this data ready yet, so it wasn't used, but in the formula, and it'll be used next year, you have closing the achievement gap for those that are historically underperforming students, and that makes up 5% of the calculation, and they would look at that if you're closing the achievement gap in math, reading, science, or writing. And then there's another 5% for closing the achievement gap overall, for all students, and that also goes into effect next year. And again, that takes a look at, are you closing the gap between getting all kids proficient and what you have proficient right now in those subject areas? They do it, give extra credit. You can get extra credit for advanced achievements, so the percent that are advanced on the PSSA are the Keystone exams in those areas, the percent that are advanced on your industry standards for your students that have vocational technical training, and then the percent scoring a three or higher on AP tests gets you some extra credit.
Obviously, that's just the high school.
That's just the high school for, you know, where the APs, we don't have anybody at our middle schools taking the APs.
Hey, back to the growth thing.
Yep. I can go back.
No, there was one that you said next year is going to be promotion rate.
Correct.
But, but there's also, but they're already, are they not looking at growth, you know?
They do.
Year, you know, and learning, and a year's worth of learn, whatever.
What the promotion, what the promotion rate refers to is the number of students who move to the next grade level at the end of the year with their, with their peers.
But they've also achieved a year's--
Correct, correct, absolutely.
So you're like double counting there?
One is looking at the academic measure and saying, based on the state test results, do we believe that the children have made a year's growth in a year's time? The other is looking at, did you move to the next grade with your cohort? So one certainly is going to influence the other one.
But it helps to limit what some people would call social promotion, where they, you know, weren't really promoting it properly. So one is, they kind of do count twice in some senses. So of course, people ask, well, what's a good SPP? What, you know, what would be, and how do I make sense of this? So to help to clarify that, we took a look at this and said, well, let's plug in some things into the formula. So if you put in 90% proficiency rate, and that would be in all those subjects that are measured, if you had every student making one year of academic growth, no more, no less, in every student, and you had a 95% attendance rate, and you had 100% promotion rate, what would the SPP be? It would be 84. So that helps give you kind of a, a way to make some sense of this, and those are very lofty kinds of, you know, achievement standards, 90% proficiency, every student is making a year's worth of growth, and you have 95% attendance and 100% promotion rate. Now, that's a very rough calculation, but that gets you kind of an idea of what, what an SPP might be, and that would give you an 84. Now, we had Carolyn Dumoresk, who's our acting education secretary, she was quoted in the newspapers as saying that a score of 70 as the benchmark would be indicating that you're moving towards success, is the way she phrased it. So let's take a look at some SPP scores here in North Penn. You can see them listed there from alphabetically, all the way on all of our elementary schools. And if I can click on that spreadsheet, and I may need some help from our students on this one, now I want to be able to see the full spreadsheet for the elementary schools.
Got you. All right. There we go.
There we go, thank you.
No problem.
And we have this available for anyone that would like to see it also, but there you can see the components, you can see the percent proficiency in math, in reading, in science, in writing, you can see the percent that are reading on the third grade level, at third grade, you can see the growth scores then in math, in reading, science, and writing. Now, just so you understand, the growth score in, that PVAAS, which stands for the Pennsylvania Value Added Assessment System, you get a score of 75 assigned to you if you have every student making exactly one year's worth of growth. So we have various scores there, but that's what you get assigned to you if you have every student making one year's worth of growth. And again, that's 40% of the formula.
And that strikes me as being one of the most important factors, right?
Well, in the past, growth was something that was monitored by schools, but it wasn't part of the reporting. All you saw before was the percent proficiency, so now you have a good indicator to see are students actually growing, you know, at a year's worth of growth. It's a very interesting calculation, there are certainly debates among the purists and the educators about if that's, you know, the best way to determine the growth figure. It's not a vertically aligned test, so it's not like, I took a test, the following year I took the same test, I got more right, therefore I made, you know, like, a year's worth of growth that way. They're taking different tests, they're indexing the growth, or they're coming up with a growth score, and a Keystone exam, a final exam, which is very different from a PSSA exam, there are a couple of years difference, a gap between that, so you might have taken a science, a PSSA in eighth grade, and then no science testing at all, you know, in ninth grade, for example, and then take a science test in 10th or 11th grade. So there, I mean, there are a lot of calculations that go into determining that whole PVAAS score, and again, the purists will debate till the, you know, till the cows come home a few well about, you know, the fairness of all those calculations, but they are what they are, and they do give 75 points if you make, if every student makes one year's worth of growth, and you can get, you know, more than that. Another important point here that I want to make is that the federal designation for Title I schools comes into play here also, and you'll notice there that many of them are either not applicable because they're not Title I schools, or they're undesignated, and then you see one there that's reward, high progress, and that's the Oak Park School. So we have, I believe it's seven, Title I elementary schools, the others are not applicable, and then the majority of Title I schools don't get a designation, they have what it's called "undesignated," but the ones that really stand out, that being if they're in the top 5% for achievement or for progress, they would be noted then so, and Oak Park's being noted as having high progress and a reward status there. Conversely, of course, we don't have any schools that fall into that category with our achievement level and our growth levels, but there are some schools in the state then that will have some notations regarding the need for some additional assistance at the, at the other end of the spectrum. Are there any questions at all on that? If not, I need to escape, I guess, out of this, right?
Yeah.
Here are our secondary schools, we have the three middle schools listed there, we have the high school listed there, and again, we can click there on that full spreadsheet, and there you can see the detail then on the secondary schools regarding their proficiency in math, reading, science, and writing, and then their growth scores for math, reading, And then you can see also the attendance rate, and then AP for the high school, PSAT participation for the high school, SAT, which is an ACT score, is a measure of college readiness. You may note there that 100 points, the full 100 points for that, for our high school, and then you can see the percent advanced, which again is a part of the calculation that goes on there. And then to get to the students that have a three or higher in the AP score, again, that's not a, that's 71 points awarded for that, it's not a 71% or something like that. We have a very high percentage of our students in the school who take AP and score really well on that. Now, that's not 71% again of the students who take the actual course, they'd look at all the students in the school, how many are taking AP, and then out of that grouping, how many of them are getting a three or higher, and then from that, how many points should be awarded for that? So we did really well in that regard and got some points. So you can see that score there. We did some additional calculations earlier, I talked about it, a score of 84, if you had those 90s in all of your subject areas, if you had one year's worth of growth on your PVAAS scores, it's 75 points for that, the 95% attendance rate and the 50% advanced, you know, put that all together there, and you get an 83.74, rounds up to 84. We have some other examples in there. If you were a school that would be high growth, high proficiency, you'd have a shot at a 95.5, that would be 90% proficiency, you got all the possible points you could for growth, you had tremendous advance, you know, that kind of stuff. If you moved down to moderate proficiency in school three, as this example, they had 80% proficiency, tremendous growth, got all the points possible, they'd have a score of 90.79, a school with low proficiency, and then the high growth, so you got 100 points for the growth, but you had a low proficiency, we'd get you 72.98, or if you had low proficiency and moderate growth, so you had low proficiency, but got one year's worth of growth, you'd come up with a 61. So those are just some examples that we put to help form some context for everyone. We think that our students are doing a tremendous job here, our teachers, our support personnel, our teachers' assistants, our administrators are doing a tremendous job, our parents are helping our students to achieve in North Penn, and we're very proud of that. All of our scores did range from 80 to 97. We had all of them meeting or exceeding 80, we had nine that were above 90. As I said earlier, Oak Park is a reward, high-progress school for their tremendous student growth and achievement, makes them in the top 5% of Title I schools in Pennsylvania. All 60 elementary and middle schools either met or exceeded the 95% attendance rate, we had 94.9% four-year cohort graduation rate, which is tremendous, we had, of course, nine students that were semifinalists for National Merit Scholar Competition, 21 students that were commended, so we have, you know, really strong SAT scores, that whole thing. Now, this is very important, this slide, and I want to make this point real clear, and that is that the student performance profile is just one indicator of a school's success. There are a lot of other measures that you put into determining whether a school is a successful school, are they safe schools, what sort of music programs, art programs do they have, do they have coursework? This formula only takes into account the math, the science, the reading or literature, the writing, so are there many other courses that go well beyond those? Do they have a strong curricular and co-curricular extracurricular program? Are students getting into the college of their choice? Are we having good partnerships with our families and doing good communication? Are there learning opportunities for social responsibility? And very importantly, are our students being academically challenged to reach new heights? So lots of things go into determining whether a school is a success, not simply this one score, even though it's a composite measure of some things, it certainly doesn't measure all things. We will continue to focus on improving each student's experience here, giving them interventions, challenging them, and the SPP score will basically take care of itself. We're about trying to help every kid and help them to achieve to their maximum potential, challenge them when necessary, provide them from additional help if necessary, and the SPP score will, will be high. We did make a commitment, again, to continuous improvement, we adopted the most strategic plan, and when I say that, what I say is, we certainly cannot claim that we are best-in-class in everything that we do. There's always room for continuous improvement, we're committed to that, we're continuing to be committed to that. So all schools do have goals and action plans in place, and will address any areas that we believe, you know, there's a room for improvement, and we didn't get, you know, 100 across the score, I'm not aware of any school that got 100, so I think all schools in the Commonwealth in our country, anywhere, can, could continue to, to grow, and that's certainly true of North Penn also. This information does corroborate our need to continuously improve, we've already previously identified areas where we want to continue to improve in, and district personnel are working hard to do that. Very importantly, that last bullet, I do want to thank our, our community for the support. The community does expect and does help to provide for outstanding schools, and we have much to celebrate. It's a very, very strong school system here in North Penn, outstanding scores, certainly we're not best-in-class in everything we do, but we're, we're working very, very hard to continue to be dedicated to that continuous improvement. Want to get the lights again? So I'll take any questions, I appreciate the ones we've had so far. Any additional questions?
I'd just like to thank the teachers and support staff, and the administration, parents, I mean, that, it takes a whole team to, to achieve at the levels that this school district is achieving at, your, your staff and you, Kurt, you know, everybody deserves our gratitude as a board for these results.
Thank you very much, Mr. Solomon. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Diane, you mentioned earlier, when these performance, or performance profiles came out, you have a plan to continuously improve. One of the ideas behind that is that you're going to visit the high-performing schools and try to learn what they're doing right, and successfully transmit that, or I guess, implement it in other schools.
Absolutely. We know we have, yeah, we know we have pockets of excellence in many schools. Every school really has some things that they are doing exceedingly well, so what we want to try to do is, is help our principals share practices and learn from each other so that we can take some of these pockets of excellence and make them more systemic throughout all of the schools.
The student, or the school performance profile, does it really take into account socioeconomic issues and changes to any great degree?
Not directly. The, the only way, unlike the old system where there, you had all those subgroups and you had to make AYP targets in all the subgroups in addition to overall, the system they've put in place now, this year does not include any subgroup kind of measures. So, it really is based on just overall achievement for the entire population and doesn't adjust or wait or compensate based on demographics. The, going forward, as Kurt mentioned, they will begin looking at whether you are closing the gap with what they're calling your historically underachieving subgroup. Instead of having separate subgroups now, to eliminate the double counting that used to happen, for instance, every child was in a group for race or ethnicity. They might also be in a group for economically disadvantaged. They might also be in a group for ESL and so forth. So, you have the same child counting in multiple subgroups. To eliminate that, they are defining this historically underperforming subgroup as being all children who are either special education, ESL, or economically disadvantaged, all counting in the same group to eliminate that double counting problem. So, this is the baseline year for the baseline data. Beginning next year, they will start looking at whether you are making progress on closing the achievement gap for that particular group of students. But that's really the only way that any kind of demographics factor into the calculation.
And you may recall that in our presentation last month, when Pennsylvania applied to the federal government regarding the waiver, they said that you would have six years to be able to do that.
Correct.
So, you could take the achievement gap--
Six years to get 50% of the gap.
Correct.
Right.
Yep.
Yep.
Sure. I'd like to thank Cheryl and her people for doing a great job. I know that a few years ago, we saw a lot of these changes coming and we started to focus on individuals and helping individual students, pulling them out, giving them the extra support they need to be successful. And you can see the benefits here. You can see the outcome here. So, it's nice. Any extra comments you wanna have? Anybody? Ms. Murphy?
It's just, obviously, we have a very diversified community. And if you look at some of the scores and communities that are more or less the same, we did very, very well and I'm very proud of our district, just exceedingly proud.
We did phenomenal. Best ever performance on record so far. All right. The public should be aware that the board did meet an executive session tonight from 6:10 until 7:25. Also, the Personnel Committee met an executive session from 5:00 to 6:10. It's time now for public comment. Anybody wishing to make a public comment, please step forward, state your name and address. Okay. All right. So, summary going forward, we're gonna take the resolution forward to the next meeting. I'll make sure they know about it.
I think you have public comments.
Oh, please step forward, state your name and address, and sign the audience and citizen logbook we have up there.
My name is Justine Krasniski. I live at 321 Royal Avenue in North Wales and I am just here to talk about getting a bus route for the kids on our street. I did email with Susan and Carolyn and I wasn't sure if there's anything that came about.
Can you speak up? I didn't hear. You're on a bus route, but--
Yes. A bus stop for my children. We live on Royal Avenue in North Wales and we have no sidewalks on our street. The part of our street that I live on is actually private, so it doesn't get plowed. There's potholes all over. And the route that I was told that my daughter should walk to school is on my street, crossing over Prospect Avenue where there are no sidewalks for about 300 feet. So, I do not think that is a safe walking path for my six-year-old who's right there walking to school every day. So, I was just here to make a statement and see if there's anything that you can do for us.
Just for clarity's sake, is that on the, that's on the opposite side of the school from the main street?
That's correct. It's closer to Hancock instead of Sommetown. Yes.
Could you copy us on some of the emails since the rest of us don't know anything about this?
I can forward you everything that I forward to the Director of Transportation.
Also-- And you need to get it to the guy sitting on the end. Mr. Schock--
Okay.
oversees some of this area and he could probably give you some straighter answers. I can tell you, PENDOT does not factor in sidewalks in their safety studies. Be careful of that. Private roads are not dedicated, therefore they're not recognized by PENDOT.
Okay.
So, that's some of the little hangups. But I would like to see what you have to say and I could get a chance to also go over and check it out.
Okay.
In the meantime, talk to Bob, give me your name and address and contact information so that we can have the transportation people contact you.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. We're gonna move forward the resolution and any other comments? Motion to adjourn?
Thank you.